Good, good, good. Hi Patrick. Oh, he's just connecting.
Hi, everybody.
Hi Amanda.
Hey Amanda. I thought we were gonna see that tiara on you this evening Amanda.
No, I've lost it, it's gone.
Gone to the ages.
Yeah.
Hi Amber.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey Jamie.
Hi Jamie.
Hey Pete.
Hey there Jamie.
Hey Bernie. Hey Amber, hey Janet. The Hopkins.
Hello. Jamie, I'm just, I'm just not gonna ever get used to that hair.
I don't know if I am either.
So what's wrong with your hair?
I don't know, Patrick was wrong with my hair.
I didn't say there was anything wrong with it, let me just clarify, I just said I'm not sure I can get used to it, that's all.
We'll see how it lasts.
Hey Pete, how are you? Good, good. Well, I guess I better mute my phone.
And Jamie, don't, don't forget that I did get that McCaskey senior photo. Of you, so.
Well, you're gonna have to share it, now that you brought it up.
I shared it in the, I shared it in the Neighborhood Leaders Academy, the McCaskey version. I also showed mine, so I was being fair.
I, I might get your picture Patrick and put it as my headshot when I stop my video.
If you go to my senior, my high school picture, you see I have hair.
It's real.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Alright. Doing okay. There are five of us on the, six of us. So we're just waiting on Zavi. I have some, once we have Counselor Garcia Malina, I have two housekeeping items that we'll address really quickly after the call to order. Oh, I see that Counselor Garcia Malina is. Great, so it looks like we have a full house, y'all, so I hereby call to order this August 25th meeting of the Council of the City of Lancaster. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to everybody watching along at home, or wherever you might be. Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Here.
Mr. Soto?
Here.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. So before we get into approving the minutes from the previous meeting, just two, two quick items. First, we are going to, or I'm going to ask with your permission, that we have a significant report added to the agenda this evening, and that is the report of Chief Burkey Heiser on the events of the weekend of May, of May 31st. So I would welcome a motion to add that under, to the agenda under reports requested by council.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any council comments? Great, hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye, thank you all very much. The other item, the other housekeeping item is just to give you a heads up. We have a change and an advertising date adjustment that we have to make for Hold On. I'm operating with only one screen tonight, so I have to see exactly which item that is on the agenda. For Administration Bill Number 9, 2020. So I'm going to ask that when we arrive at that item on the agenda, I can talk you through the reasons why, but I would ask for that actually to be tabled to the first council meeting in September. And so those are the, those are the two housekeeping items, that one doesn't require any action here. So we'll move right along, can we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of council?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the meeting minutes for August 11th, 2020. Council comments? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye, okay, minutes are approved. Proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition, Mr. Harris, do we have any?
We do not, Mr. President.
Excellent. Public comment, this is the first public comment period reserved for those who have contacted the city clerk ahead of time to request the opportunity to speak. Did anyone reach out to you, Mr. Harris?
They did not, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll move into reports requested by council. There are now three on the agenda this evening. I'm going to ask that we hear, we're, I'm gonna ask that we hear Chief Burkey Heiser's report first, followed by the Love Your Block report, and then we'll go into the public hearing of the rezoning at Frederick and Queen Streets, is that alright with everybody?
Yes.
So as you know, and as I've characterized much of the summer in downtown city of Lancaster, the murder of George Floyd resulted in protests, not just nationwide, but internationally. And we were not, we were not exempt from, I think, both the positive effects of that and of the, and of the challenges. And I know that we have a diverse set of opinions on, on how law enforcement is best employed in our community. But Chief Burkey Heiser has brought us a thorough report and commentary on the events of that first protest in Lancaster City, which by any definition were significant. So we welcome here, welcome him here to address the meeting this evening. Unless anybody else would like to tee him up, the show is yours, chief.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the rest of the councilors. I know everybody's been waiting for this information for some time. On May 25th, 2020, the killing of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers shocked, saddened, and enraged communities across the United States, including our own. Members of the Lancaster Bureau of Police felt and shared those same emotions and bore the additional burdens of disgrace and shame on their profession. During large-scale emotional and unannounced spontaneous demonstrations on May 30th and 31st of 2020, our officers utilized pepper spray a total of six times, each during the course of an arrest. Following the week of June 1st, we conducted a full review of each of those pepper spray uses by analyzing the records produced from the occurrences and reviewing over 80 hours of police body camera footage. That review and analysis was conducted to determine, with respect to each application of pepper spray, if its use was one, justified, and two, effectuated in accordance with our Police Bureau policies and our training. With one exception, I've determined that each decision to use pepper spray and the manner in which it was deployed on May 30th and 31st was consistent with Police Bureau policy. And perhaps even more importantly, was for a lack of a better description in textbook. Each fell squarely within the teachings and education generally provided, provided to police officers across the country, to me and to my officers, and was consistent with Bureau policy. In one instance, the decision to use pepper spray was appropriate, but the manner in which it was deployed or used was inconsistent with our policy and training, and that officer involved has been retrained. While finding that the decisions to use pepper spray were by the book, I am reporting to you tonight that the book needs to be rewritten. As Chief of your Police Bureau, I recognize that the decisions of the police leadership and officers' actions come with great responsibility, and that I need to do all that I can to assure the safety of the public and my fellow officers. To do so, I must, with your help and the help of the Community Police Working Group and the guidance of the mayor, rewrite the playbook to assure that through effective situational analysis, policy implementation, education and training, decisions to utilize de-escalation and other means to avoid uses of force are made and applied whenever and wherever possible. As a police officer and former member of the military, I am trained to provide reports that factually report on matters. With that in mind, I am providing you, to you, a separate, more detailed factual summary of police activities on May 30th and May 31st for your review. During the remainder of my time with you this evening, I would like to begin our conversation on rewriting the playbook. I've been a member of the Lancaster Bureau of Police since May of 1994, working my way through the ranks over the last 26 years to Chief of Police. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in law enforcement leadership, a master's degree in management with a concentration in organizational leadership. Served our country as a member of the United States Air Force Security Police, graduated from the Federal Bureau of Invest, of Investigation National Academy, have a graduate certificate from the University of Virginia for coursework in leadership context and culture, conflict resolution for law enforcement, law enforcement executives, contemporary issues in law enforcement, and advanced psychology of law enforcement. And I have attended several thousand hours of law enforcement training covering topics including patrol tactics, community policing, SWAT operations, investigations, leadership and supervision. I list these matters in my background, not to brag or to convince you that my opinions are correct, but rather to confirm to you that the decisions to use pepper spray and the methods in which it were deployed were absolutely consistent with the training and education I have received and passed on to my officers. The playbook on the response, decision-making process involved in the handling of protests and demonstrations and the use of force during them needs to be examined and rewritten after careful consideration to best evidence-based practices in law enforcement that are based in community policing. This examination is happening throughout the law enforcement profession as we speak. During my career in Lancaster, we have not seen demonstrations of this type and scale, and after review, it is clear that we were not properly prepared to encounter or respond to the dynamics related to these demonstrations. On May 30th, we were monitoring the demonstration like we have done in the past with no real police involvement, and were prepared to block streets if necessary. Throughout the afternoon, the size of the crowd grew and demonstrators unexpectedly marched on major, major thoroughfares throughout the city, causing us to quickly change our tactics and role. We conducted traffic control to limit pedestrian and vehicle interaction with the goals of keeping everyone safe, avoiding confrontations, and providing a safe environment for the community to peacefully demonstrate. Once the crowd size lessened to a more manageable size, in order to accommodate other calls for service and staffing constraints, we discontinued traffic control efforts, but placed traffic barricades at Prince and Chestnut Streets to provide a safe area for demonstrators to continue gathering. My overall concern for keeping the streets clear was to avoid a tragedy like the one that happened in Charlottesville, Virginia, when cars ran into crowds and wounded and killed pedestrians. On May 31st, the Police Bureau was made aware of a honk and drive demonstration organized by Lancaster Stands Up, scheduled to begin at 2:00 PM and continue until 3:00 PM. Based on information provided by organizers and participants who confirmed and explained they would observe traffic laws, our plan was to monitor the matter and respond to calls for service related to the event. At approximately 11:30 AM, a second demonstration, not announced to us or anticipated, originally involving about 10 people commenced on foot on the sidewalk at the intersection of Prince and Chestnut Streets. This continued and began directly blocking the planned route of travel of the honk and drive event. I advised Lieutenant Carpenter, the Police Bureau cannot allow for the street to be blocked because of the mobile demonstration route. Around 1:00 PM, we began to receive calls through County 911 dispatch that lanes of traffic were being blocked at Prince and Chestnut Streets. Officers responded to the area and requested that demonstrators move to the sidewalk so we could open the street for the honk and drive demonstrators. On this occasion, the demonstrators complied. Lieutenant Carpenter contacted me at different times to update me on the demonstrations, both of which were very quickly increasing in size. Our overall goal was to keep the lanes of travel open because of the mobile demonstration. We were also extremely concerned about demonstrator and pedestrian safety due to the large number of vehicles and people. Due to the growing crowd size, the multiple threats to public safety, and the backup of traffic throughout multiple streets in the city, Lieutenant Carpenter is officer-in-command, and with my knowledge, requested additional county police units, which include the Pennsylvania State Police. In order to clear passage for the vehicles on the streets, officers began to make arrests of pedestrians blocking the street. Each arrest began with a warning to the individual to move out of the street or there would be an arrest if they refused. As officers began to effect the arrests, individuals in the crowd closest to the arrest moved towards the arresting officers. In accordance with the textbook, cover officers used OC or pepper spray to keep those individuals back from the arrests to protect both the officers and the individuals being arrested. During a second series of arrests shortly after 2:30 PM, as the arrest began, individuals within the crowd immediately approached the arrests, and OC spray was used again to keep those individuals back. It was around this time that a small group of individuals in the crowd began to throw objects at police, and this included our mounted units. The tensions in the crowd increased as additional Pennsylvania State Police and county officers arrived on scene wearing riot gear, in compliance with their guidelines and protocols coupled with the information that objects were being thrown at officers. Once additional county units and the state police were on scene, we stopped trying to open the street at that time, and I made a phone call to Mayor Sarachi to ask her for assistance to mobilize community leaders to help de-escalate the situation. We also began to divert traffic on the surrounding streets to lessen the volume at the intersection. The de-escalation took some time and was eventually successful in allowing us to get traffic flowing. When the queued traffic cleared, we closed the first block of West Chestnut Street to allow the demonstration to continue safely. While we followed the textbook in responding, as we did on May 31st, it became clear to me that our collective police efforts were further escalating the situation. We needed to do something different to de-escalate tensions. As the week progressed, city leaders and the police department were able to open a dialogue with demonstrators that included me, more than a dozen of our officers, and our police social worker, listening to demonstrators and speaking with them to hear their concerns, fears, and anger. My overall goal throughout the week was to continue dialogue and ensure public safety. There were no subsequent uses of force. As I indicated earlier, I will be seeking your counsel along with the council of members of our community and law enforcement personnel across the county and country to help write a new playbook to guide us in making the decisions that contributed to the use of pepper spray during the demonstrations on May 30th and 31st. Namely, number one, how do we determine when to enforce the laws regarding use of our public thoroughfares during times of demonstration and protest? Number two, how to better analyze and determine whether the assistance of outside police agencies is needed? Three, how to assure that when outside police agencies are called in for assistance, that their approach to the situation is consistent with ours? Four, when to use the power of arrest to accomplish the goal of clearing the right of way? And five, deciding what level of force should be applied in effectuating those arrests based on the level of resistance? While it would not be easy or possible to come up with a one-approach-fits-all solution to the threats posed to public safety and resource management in situations where groups of people are intentionally and/or spontaneously blocking lane of traffic on a busy thoroughfare, I am confident that we can collectively work to develop response procedures that strike an appropriate balance and utilize an effective approach to preserve the rights of all of our residents. These conversations among county law enforcement professionals and changes in response are ongoing since May 31st. I, as your police chief, am committed to assuring that the Lancaster Bureau of Police remains responsive to the public safety needs of our community and to the evolution of its policies and procedures, training and retraining, and to engaging our community in that process. To that end, we are moving forward with plans to seek accreditation through the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police, which establishes a credible framework for evaluating agency practices and procedures, improves law enforcement and community relations, and develops improved methods for providing services to the community as well as many other benefits. As I continue to meet with and seek input from many community stakeholders, we are continuing to evaluate other changes within the Bureau, and I will keep you and the public advised of that. Not as a defense of the Police Bureau and our decisions, but to ensure you are aware of the underlying dynamics. It is also worth mentioning the level of professionalism Lancaster Bureau of Police officers along with other responding agencies maintained throughout the week of demonstrations. I am proud of how officers handled themselves in the face of a small but very vocal number of individuals among the demonstrators using extreme verbal profanity, including racial slurs directed at officers, especially minority officers. Unfortunately, some of this continues to this day during regular calls for service and even when officers are walking into their shifts in civilian clothing. As I said earlier, I am fully responsible for all of the decisions made and actions taken. And I am grateful to my officers for implementing my decisions in a thoroughly professional manner under extremely difficult circumstances. For that, I thank them, and I hope you will as well. I also want to thank and express my utmost appreciation to our community leaders, residents, clergy, and city government officials who helped us maintain public safety throughout that week. Thank you for this time this evening.
First of all, thank you very much, Chief Burkey Heiser. That was thorough and thoughtful and sincere, and I think if nothing else, that's, that's appreciated from the jump. Not to belabor the agenda overly much, but if any member of council has comments or questions while we have the, while we have the chief, let's try to keep it brief, but I think the, the meeting has capacity for, for a little of that. Counselor Diaz?
Yes, I just want to mention, chief, that I do appreciate everything you have done. I know that it has been very contentious, and I know that all policemen go through a lot of emotions and just like other mental situations that occur. I gotta, I gotta applaud you because as a sister that has a brother that's in police and coming from four other policemen that are in our family, I know what they go through on an everyday basis. And knowing that we need to respect the citizens, but we also need to respect our policeman that protects our community at all times. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, ma'am?
Of course, Counselor Soto.
Chief Burkey Heiser, I want to thank you for this thorough report. And getting to the point, I have one question. The agitators from outside the city that were supposedly instigating, was anything resolved with that?
So as I have in the other detailed information, the update on that is pretty much, we've identified different individuals, but we haven't been able to determine or pull together any evidence that they were involved in any direct agitation of the crowd or throwing items at, at our police officers. And I could certainly, you know, I know our time is brief this evening, and I could certainly meet with, you know, each of you one-on-one and answer any additional questions that you may have related to the documents I provided for you this evening, and I'd be glad to do that. Uh, and I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you, chief. And again, uh, thank you for your thoroughness and what the police force has done during these times. And even though there's been situations that have arisen that may or may not be questionable, I, I do believe that the character and the professionalism of a police force uh, cannot be questioned. And, and thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may. I, I too would like to thank you, chief, for taking the time to really review this and to dig in as to why we unfortunately had to land at the situation that we were at. And for that, I'm thankful. I too share in your kind of disenchantment that while the use of pep, pepper spray, um, was by the book that we do need to work on that book, uh, because the fact that the protest needed to occur for us to kind of review those five questions, like particularly the ones around how do we determine when to enforce the laws regarding use, um, of public thorough, like through wayfares during times of demonstrations and protest? How to better analyze and determine whether the assistance of outside police agencies is needed? Um. So it's, it's just heartening to know that we haven't had those conversations before, but I'm very appreciative of your commitment to work with the community, to work with Community Police Working Group to get those questions answered. Um, so I appreciate the work that you're doing and that the police force is doing and kind of working through this. And I think this is just another example of how we need to work together with the community to answer these questions. Uh, I don't really have any further questions. This is the first time that I'm hearing it and seeing through this, but I'm sure that I will and I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, you may, Counselor Royal.
Um, uh, first, I want to thank you, chief, for, um, the thorough report and um, also for all the work that you and your team are doing and, and have done throughout the protest. Um, you know, seeing you out there, I, I definitely know that your heart was in the right place and you were definitely making sure that everyone was safe. Uh, so just want to thank you for that. Um, also want to second the fact that we do have to rewrite that playbook. I think, um, seeing the events that are happening not only, uh, around locally, uh, but nationally, I think there's an understanding that um, if we're not going to see the leadership on a national level to rewrite that playbook, then we have to depend on your leadership, council's leadership and the mayor's leadership to rewrite that playbook. So that way, uh, we're an example, uh, for, um, other cities across the United States. So just want to thank you and you know, if there's anything that we can do to support you in reimagining what public safety looks like, um, and making sure that it benefits all of us, um, I, I think, uh, council's game for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. In that case, uh, Chief Berkeyheiser, uh, you have our thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, okay. Uh, who do we have, um, present, uh, to present to us on, uh, Love Your Blocks? Is that uh, you, Mayor Sarachi or? Oh, I see Christian popping on. Um. Hello?
Hi, thank you so much for having us, Council, uh, President. And I believe Renee should be here. Great. I think she just got added.
Um, okay, great. Uh, Christian Renee, um, please, uh, take it away. Do us the favor of, uh, introducing yourselves and your role with the City of Lancaster.
Of course. Uh, I'll go first. Um, my name is Christian Cassidy Amstutz and I have been serving as an AmeriCorps Vista member with the Department of Neighborhood Engagement, um, specifically on the Love Your Block grant, mini grant application process.
Yes. And, um, I'm Renee Adelman and I have also been serving as a Vista, um, on the Love Your Block project with the Department of Neighborhood Engagement. So.
Yes. And, um, we had done previously, uh, a presentation on our progress and our work in December prior to, uh, some of you joining us, so, uh, joining the council. And then obviously, um, we, we haven't had a chance to present again. So thank you so much for having us. Um, I'm going to be sharing my screen. We have a presentation, um, just to go through some of the work that we've done. Um, and then we're also happy to take any questions that you might have at the end. So without further ado, pull this up. Here we go. Great. Yes. So Love Your Block, um, was the program they were working on. Just to give you a brief recap of what that is for anyone who might not be familiar. Um, it is a program that provides mini grants ranging from five to $2,500 for citizen-led, um, and organization-led, um, projects in, specifically in the southeast to start, um, that, uh, addressed urban blight, um, uh, litter cleanup and facade, um, updating as well. Uh, as we'll get into, we had some changes that occurred because of COVID-19. Um, but to move on, we do want to start by thanking our partners and I'll, I'll let Renee take the tour.
Yeah. So thank you. Um, we wanted, uh, for having us today and we want to say thank you to our partners. Cities of Service is our parent foundation and, um, they provided funding and technical assistance. We also want to thank the High Foundation. They provided funding for our projects. Um, SACA Lancaster Southeast Elm Street Movement also provided funding and was a program partner as well as Tabor Community Service, who served as our fiduciary this year for the program. Yes. So, um, some Love Your Block project updates, uh, the Fall 2019 Grants, um, we had awarded them the last time we were on. Um, and we'd award five grants, but two of them have, were completed before COVID hit. Um, the rest of them were scheduled to be happening in April and May and then, um, schedules got off because of COVID. And so some of them were, two of them were completed later this, in the summer than were anticipated. Um, and one of them, due to capacity issues, had to be transitioned. So, um, CAP, um, Crispus Addicts Community Center had applied for a grant to put in a community garden, but, um, due to capacity and changes because of COVID, they had to transition and we were able to provide the funds for their food bank instead, um, to help with issues that have arisen due to COVID and having a higher increase of, um, food insecurity. Um, so yes, that, we also had, um, let's see, um, which one? Windows installed in a park, um, building, uh, down at the South End Park, um, so that they could, yeah, so that neighbors, um, could utilize the building, um, community members, um, could get more use out of it because before they were bricked in and it wasn't the most welcoming space and it wasn't the most usable space and now it's more usable. Um, there was a guard, a community garden built at the corner of Shippen and Locust. Um, well, it was already there, but it was like enhanced, um, and some, um, trash cans were installed on Dauphin Street. I believe, yes.
Yes. And we also, um, provided financial assistance for the Light Up Southeast event.
Yes.
That Crispus Addicts put on in December. So just to provide some setup, um, we then, uh, so we came into a grant process open when we started our Vista term last September. Um, and then we, uh, launched our own second, uh, grant application period for an anticipated spring grant round. Um, and so we just wanted to share the, um, promotional video we were able to put together. But also, um, just briefly goes into, uh, the meaningfulness of community engagement. So we're gonna just play this briefly. It's a minute long.
When I hear the phrase, "Love your neighbor,"
When I hear "love your neighbor," I hear
Together.
Surprise.
Empathy. I always want to put myself in my neighbor's shoes.
When you give that back to someone, it always comes back around twice.
I think "love your neighbor" means doing the little things for them.
They bring the trash cans in when, um, maybe I've forgotten.
You might have an elderly neighbor that needs to sidewalk shovel.
All the neighbors coming together as one.
Treat others the way you'd like to be treated.
Saying hi to them.
I like to think of loving as more of a verb.
Bringing everybody together.
We are a better community by being a more diverse community.
When I hear "love your neighbor," I think of kindness. I think of friendship.
I think in a nutshell, looking out for each other and having their back.
Making Lancaster a really great place to live.
Okay. Okay.
Let's, can we go to the next slide? Oh, yes, there we go. Um, so as our, as I pre, uh, previous, previously stated, our predecessor, uh, Vistas, Carl and Michael, who some of you might be familiar with, um, had established, uh, opening the grant period on February 14th, Valentine's Day in honor of the "Love Your Neighbor" aspect of it. So we continued that tradition, um, and we handed out succulents to a number of, um, city hall employees as well as, uh, community organizers and organizations, um, and other various partners that we've worked with. Um, so you can see those in the bottom left-hand corner of this slide and the theme was letting your love grow. Um, and so as you can see, having this launch on February 14th, that kind of, uh, brushed up against the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, so as that came about and we realized that timelines and, uh, plans were going to have to change, we closed the application, um, uh, window, which had received five applications at that point. Um, and as we came back to those, we ended up awarding three from them, uh, from those original spring grant applications, two being murals, um, one at that same community garden that was expanded on Shippen and Locust, one in the Southwest, um, on, uh, Poplar, no, not Poplar.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Yes, thank you. And then also, um, also on Poplar, um, is they're, uh, going to be purchasing lidded trash cans for neighbors and distributing them to help with litter alleviation. And, uh, just to also briefly expand, we were able to offer the Love Your Block Mini Grant Application to everyone in the city due to, um, additional funding that had been awarded to the city because of a high foundation grant. To explain why the scope had been broadened past the southeast. Um, but because of COVID, we, in addition to our cohort with, uh, of cities that are also doing Love Your Block through Cities of Service, we realized that, you know, there were more immediate needs that were coming up that, um, we had the funds that could be, uh, used, and implemented really quickly. So through, um, through the flexibility of our funders and through, and Cities of Service, we were able to start, uh, accepting applications for $500 projects that would, uh, meet those immediate needs. So we received over 30 applications and were able to award 21. Um, we were awarding them five at a time, week by week, just so there was a rolling basis, um, and projects could get started, but also so that we weren't inundated with, um, a ton of people to get set up on a short period of time. Um, so we also were able to, um, through some outreach work during COVID with neighborhood group leaders, we were able to set up a neighborhood group grant to, um, meet specific needs that groups were having in terms of projects that they wanted to complete. And as, um, Renee had explained earlier, we were able to transition one of the previous grants into, um, funds for a food bank and we also were able to, um, provide similar funds to two other food banks within the city. So some of these projects were mask-making, um, we had community meals being made and distributed and delivered, care packages for families and activity kits for kids, as well as just community building and documentary, um, projects as well. So we had a community, um, coloring book, multiple, uh, photo projects, um, that kind of thing.
And here we just have some pictures from some of the projects. Um, one of the pictures that in the top left-hand corner is of one of the masks, um, that was being made, um, some people distributing meals. Um, one of the projects was purchasing, um, carts, like little dolly carts for, um, the Crispus Addicts Food Bank so that, um, guests didn't have to transport, like carry all their groceries home. They could have a way to help transport. Um, some of the pictures below are pictures of children completing art projects, um, that were provided through the, uh, through different art kits, um, as well as some supplies for care packages. And there was also a pop-up, um, service for, um, through Grape Leaf, through Grape Leaf Caf, um, the Grape Leaf Empowerment Center, sorry, um, where they helped provide services for, um, immigrants and refugee families, um, who may need help, who needed help accessing services that, yeah, that just needed help accessing services. So. And then here we just have some other pictures, um, one of the coloring book that was created, um, some more meals that were being distributed. I believe these ones were at the YWCA, um, some free, uh, one of our groups had some free produce that they put out. Well, two of our, um, projects provided free produce to local neighbors. And then a mural. Right? Yes.
Yeah. And then also the, we were able to provide some assistance to rebel cause for their, the first day shelter, homeless day, unhoused day shelter they set up.
Yes. Yeah. And so some of the things, um, that we have some, yeah, so as we come to an end, September 1st is our last day as AmeriCorps Vistas. So the two-year, um, Vista term is ending then. Um, so Love Your Block will be transitioning from a Vista-led program, um, and it will be continued by the Department of Neighborhood Engagement. Um, but there are some, a little bump, a few bumps in terms of capacity because they're losing both Christian and myself, um, right now. So, um, that's two people gone. And um, so we're hoping to, they're hoping to re-up, open applications in January. Um, of course, dependent on the capacity, um, projects, um, will be coordinated in collaboration with Pace Man, the Pace Project Manager, um, who was recently hired, but those ones will be mostly the art projects. Not all of the projects will be coordinated with the Pace Project Manager, but ones that having to deal with public art will be. And, um, just, we're hope, we're a little concerned with maintaining the momentum of projects, um, with less manpower to oversee them. Like, we hope things will continue to go well. We've worked, worked really hard to get things where they are and, um, to have good relations with community members and community groups and, um, we don't want to see that go away just because we're leaving. So. And some of our additional responsibilities. So we didn't just do Love Your Block. Um, one of the projects that I helped work on was a public participation platform. So, um, when COVID hit, we realized we needed to figure out different ways to engage with the community because we couldn't meet in person. Um, and an online platform had always kind of been in like, in the works, but, um, we knew we needed to speed it up. So I helped, um, along with a team from the Department of Neighborhood Engagement, um, and out, outside, um, folk, we, um, researched public participation platforms and, um, demoed them and like, decided which one would be the best for our city. Um, and we are in the works of implementing that and hopefully that will be up and running within uh, the next few weeks, um, once training is done and things are set up well. Yeah. Um, we also had weekly neighborhood group leader meetings, which Christian kind of took the helm on, um, um, where we could communicate with the neighborhood group leaders and see what was going on in the neighborhood as well as provide them updates. Uh, it was a really great experience for all, like, I know the neighborhood group leaders loved it, loved being able to like hear what was going on with the city as well as voicing their concerns and sharing what was happening in their neighborhoods that we may not have been seeing otherwise. Um, so it was a very value, they're very valuable meetings and they will be continuing on a bi-weekly basis, um, to just keep that flow of information and keep that connection between the citizens and the Department of Neighborhood Engagement.
Yeah. Thank, yeah, thank you so much, Renee. Um, in addition to that, uh, the Third Annual Neighbor to Neighbor Forum, which is led by the Coalition Combat Poverty, um, took place this year and we were able to, um, assist with its planning as well as implementation, which ended up becoming a, um, a virtual event due to the pandemic as well. Um, so in addition to that planning, um, we were able to work with Milzey Crossco, our department, director as well to, um, put together a, uh, presentation on, um, how to effectively and in these new times, um, conduct community outreach and engagement. And then finally, um, a project that is in the works and hopefully will be getting started soon as well is the Civics Academy that the Department of Neighborhood Engagement is looking to, um, begin hosting in collaboration with some of the neighborhood leaders that we work with, which will just provide basic information, um, and education and background on the municipal, the municipality, the city, um, how to participate as a fully engaged citizen and how the, um, the workings and the goings-on of it are conducted as well. how to participate as a fully engaged citizen and how the workings and the goings on of it are conducted as well. So that a lot of the concerns that have been heard, especially during the protests that were mentioned earlier in the meeting could be met by giving people a greater understanding of the mechanisms of the world they live in, as well as giving also, providing them the opportunity to have a greater voice in everything. And so to wrap up our presentation, we just want to talk about some of the outcomes that we saw this year. You were able to provide 30 grants total, which were, which amounted to nearly $36,000 in distributed funds. We had over 300 volunteers across all of our projects and 1,600 volunteer hours between those people. And Renee, if you want to just touch on the spotlight we got from cities.
Yes, so the 30 grants was a highlight. We, of our cohort of 10 cities, we had the most grants that were awarded this year. And our work was highlighted by Cities of Service by the, so leaders, yeah, we were leaders in our cohort for community engagement during COVID and some of the efforts that the Department of Neighborhood Engagement took on were like lauded by Bloomberg and philanthropies and the Cities of Service as being well done.
Get a little, little brag in there. But thank you so much. I, I know Renee, I'm sure will say something as well, but it's been a really a pleasure and an honor to be able to work with the city and the residents here. And yeah, to, to have been able to establish such respectful and trusting relationships in here has been a real honor. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to serve the city and for your support of our program and just all the support we've received. So just thank you very much for everything.
Yeah. And if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Renee. Do we have any questions from members of council? Bobby?
I don't necessarily have any questions, but I wanted to thank you for your service. The work that you do goes right to the heart of what the city values, which is community and working with one another to make our community better all the time because we can always be better. And while I didn't get the chance to really work with you as much as I would like to because of COVID, I'm extremely grateful for everything that you've done in our community and really getting integrated. And I wish you the best wherever it is that you're going.
Thank you.
And if I may, Council President, just to say thank you to Christian and Renee. Been wonderful additions to our team here at City Hall and really helped us. This word is just overused, but I can't come up with another one right now, which is pivot in the time of COVID in terms of what we needed to do. And your work will go on because just as an example, the public participation platform and the efforts to get that up and going are going to continue to serve us very soon in the, in the weeks ahead as we work to engage the public in a, in a better digital platform than we currently have available to us. So just thank you both very much. And I'm sorry that we can't be together to celebrate each of you and your contributions and to the city of Lancaster. And wanted to thank you from my heart for all that you've done.
Good man.
Well, without belaboring the point, I don't know to what degree much of the public knows this. Being an AmeriCorps Vista is not a fantastically well compensated position throughout the term and having worked with Vistas both at the city and at CAP. Christian and Renee have shown a lot of dedication to their work and made the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Engagement, I think, really contributed to its success this year. And that success is more of the soft stuff. It's, it's less as to whether, you know, people typically think of the, you know, the city as like, does my toilet flush? Do I have power? Does the, does the water come out of the faucet when I, when I turn it on? But the ability of people in all neighborhoods of the city of Lancaster to take that much more pride in their home and in the block that they live on and in their city, something, you know, coming directly to them in the form of funds that we provide and building those relationships. That's, that's huge. And it makes kind of a, for lack of a better word, spiritual difference in, in our communities. So really personally, I want to thank Christian and Renee on, on behalf of the council of the city of Lancaster. Thank you. Mr. Harris, I apologize. Can you, can you do me a favor? I know they're, they're moving along soon. But just before I forget, can we, can we write them something and I'll sign it to give Christian and Renee? We'll mail it to them. They can put it on their wall if that's the sort of thing that they, that they care about, but just to say thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Christian, Renee, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to the public hearing, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody. Thanks for bearing with so far. So we now move to the third item in the reports requested by council. Technically, what's coming up next is a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is to be conducted again per the, per the relevant laws. So what we're going to do this evening is that we'll have a brief presentation of what it is that we are discussing in the first place. We'll hear from, we'll hear from the city, I think primarily from Chris's Department, Community Planning and Economic Development, as well as from the applicant for the rezoning. And then there will be space for comments and questions from council and the public. Because it is a hearing of council, priority will be given to council members. This is not the point on the agenda where we will vote. We will have the hearing, have the entering of evidence and the comments and, and whatnot. And then we will close the hearing and resume our legislative agenda. And where the amendment appears on the legislative agenda, that is where the vote will be taken. So if you'll bear with me just a second, I hereby call to order the public hearing on a petition to consider the request of Lancaster General Hospital and Lancaster General Services Business Trust to amend the Lancaster zoning ordinance, ordinance number one, 1996, to rezone a site at North Queen, North Prince and West Frederick Streets from HC Hospital Complex and R4 Residential Density Development and Commercial Services to MU Mixed Use. Let's begin then with the representatives of the city of Lancaster. Mr. Dells, if you would like to start us off.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, councilors. Good to see you tonight. I'll be brief at the outset. I know that we're taking another pass at the hearing and want to acknowledge that the development team from LGH and from the Haken Group have done some additional work to, to clarify and expand upon land development vision for this particular site. I think it's important tonight to note for the record at the outset here that the, the matter at hand for council is really a question of rezoning. It's a question of what is the appropriate, appropriate underlying land use for this particular site. I did have the opportunity to send a summary memo to the council a couple of days ago, which articulated the administration's support for the rezoning at the site. I think that the rezoning and the land development vision for this site has a lot of advantages. I think we're going to touch on those throughout the hearing. I think the last thing I'll say before I, I turn it over to the team here from LGH is just to reiterate the analysis that our planning bureau had done of the site. And this came up at previous meetings, so forgive me for the repetition. But whenever we look at a rezoning, the first thing that we take a look at is our comprehensive plan. Now, our comprehensive plan is from 1993, so it is a very old document. It's still the relevant document at hand, but we have also supplemented that through the years through other planning documents that have guided our work. And to name those briefly, there was the Lancaster Intermunicipal Committee Plan done in 2006 called Growing Together. The City Alliance's Building on Strength Plan, which was completed in 2015. That was a partnership between the City Alliance and the city of Lancaster. In a lot of ways, that went beyond an economic development plan and had important land use components as well. And then finally, the county's recent, this is 2040 comprehensive plan. And the city administration has reviewed those documents as has the City Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. And all those bodies have, have found the rezoning consistent with that planning guidance. That is strictly the zoning question at hand. I know there have been, there's been a lot of good dialogue about what to expect from land development following zoning. And I think we're, we're going to touch on some of those matters and I'm happy to jump back in. But we'll, we'll pause there and we'll turn the mantle over to the team from LGH.
Hi, this is Brian Burgess. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Burgess.
That's great. Thank you. I was asked if we could bring Mike Davis and Amber could bring Mike Davis in from Barley Snyder in case we have a question that he needs to handle. And are we going to pull the presentation up? Great. So while that's coming up, thank you again for having us presenting in front of the council. We did bring some additional information to the table this time around. So I will spend a little bit of the time reviewing what we talked about previously, providing some context. And then I'll turn it over to Neil Fisher from Haken in order to get into a little more detail as we move forward. So if we advance to the next slide. So we want to buy some context for the campus overall. So in the low right hand corner, you see Lancaster General Hospital and the Associated Downtown Pavilion and parking deck where we have the employee deck. And then the property in question or property in question are immediately across Queen Street bordered by Frederick Street and Prince Street. And this is a parcel that we purchased some years ago, back in 2004. We did make some changes to the site in terms of changing the zoning to hospital complex for most of it. The lower portion of it, closest to James Street, is still R4, as mentioned earlier. And we did knock down the existing YMCA building, which we located around the corner on Harrisburg Pike. So the, the, the project, when it was originally purchased, it was, you know, an advantageous location for us because it was so proximate to the main campus. And the change in the zoning back, back then was going to be helpful for us for development in the future. We did though, have the opportunity to partner with Franklin and Marshall and others to do the Northwest Gateway Project. And that had significant remediation of a brownfield site and relocation of the rail yard and enabled us to achieve one of our objectives, which was to relocate the acute behavioral health beds that we had in the hospital to a dedicated behavioral health hospital. And so you see that up on Harrisburg Pike. And then just southeast of that location, there's another six acres or so of the land that we can develop in the future. And so our thinking around the, the site at Frederick and Queen has changed and is probably not required for significant healthcare use, although as you'll see when we get into the site plans and the elevations later, we do want to build a medical office building on the southeast corner of the site. Wouldn't mind moving to the next slide. So in my role at Lancaster General is Chief Strategy Officer. And we just completed our five year strategic plan, which starts at the beginning of this fiscal year in July. And I've been going around doing a presentation for various constituencies within the organization about what's in the plan. One of the four focus areas is titled community commitment. And as you can imagine, as a not-for-profit healthcare provider, we have a strong healthcare mission that we try to adhere to and try to deliver that high quality care for residents, not only of the city, but of the county and beyond. But the community commitment part of strategic plan really speaks to a much larger commitment than that. And that is, as the largest employer and the largest business in both the city and the county, we see our obligation as being an anchor institution, that we have an obligation to the health and wellness of the community above and beyond just the provision of healthcare services. And so we've been involved in those spaces for some time, you know, whether it's activities around the homeless or funding mental health services, suicide prevention, et cetera. They're all, you know, at least tangentially related to our healthcare mission, but really about improving the health and wellness of the community overall. And in the strategic plan, we did bring forward two specific projects for board review and approval. One was around addressing food security and food deserts. And the other, I think, which is more on point to some of the feedback we got from the city council members last time around is around committing a multi-year, 10-year commitment to work on abating lead in homes in Lancaster City and in the county. And some of the questions that we got last time around, affordable housing. While we didn't have a, a specific response to that relative to affordable housing, we do believe this, this substantial 10-year commitment to abating lead in homes is going to make the existing housing stock far safer for residents. And those residents, I think, skewed to some of the most adverse populations in the city and some of the lower income communities within the city. So we do have that commitment rolling out. We filed approval from the board at, I believe it was the March Board Meeting. But just something we wanted to touch on. And John, I didn't know if you had something else that you wanted to add to this in terms of our activities in the community?
Sure. Under community investment, we're aware that there were some questions as to whether this project would impact our $1.5 million pilot payment, which we provide and have been providing the city for a number of years. And that, that amount would not change or is not impacted by, by this project.
So with that, I'll move it on to the next slide and so when we think about what we're trying to do with this specific project, as we've talked about in the past, you know, we thought about sort of revitalizing the immediate neighborhood with a health-focused community development. So what would that include? It would include residents, it would include retail and restaurants potentially on the ground floor. And then in that southeast corner of the site, we do want to build a 30,000 square foot medical office building. While we're currently doing the programming for that building, there is two things that we are certainly want to do. We want to relocate the Manor Ridge practice and expand it at the location. So we improve access to primary care for the immediate community. And then we have a urgent care center in the downtown pavilion, which shares space with another use. And so it's only open sort of after hours and on weekends. And it's, it's quite popular. The demand for urgent and emergent services continues to increase. And so we do want to build a dedicated urgent care center in that building. We also think it's advantageous for the community just to expand housing overall. We have seen with our medical residents, with doctors that are relocated to the community, with other staff, nurses, et cetera, having struggled getting access to any housing in the community. And so we thought having proximate to the campus additional housing available would help us attract and retain talent and provide an opportunity or increase opportunity for part of that workforce to actually live within the city, which we think is great. And then the overall improvement to the neighborhood, currently the site is largely vacant. We did put in some surface parking and a temporary park, but the use that we have envisioned for it, I think, would contribute more to the revitalization of the neighborhood than, than sort of such passive uses like we have currently. And so we did look for a partner that shared those goals and interests and also a partner that would be with us for the long term. And that's how we got to selecting Haken. They've done similar developments in Chester County and elsewhere. And they, they are a developer that also holds long-term in the portfolio. And so we felt that the organization we were entering into this opportunity with would be a partner for the long term. And so we felt that the organization we were entering into this opportunity with would be a partner for the long term. With that, I think I'm turning it over, yes.
Yes. Thank you, Brian, and good evening, council members. Before I get started, I'd like to thank the city council for their feedback during our July presentation. It was, it was very clear to me and to Lancaster General that one of the goals of, of city council is to make sure that the project, whatever gets developed on the property, is something that's going to be a benefit, not just in the short term, but in the long term for Lancaster City. And I think, based on what you, you've heard and the relationship that you have with Lancaster General, that is, that is obviously their goal as well. And as I go through, through the project and, and our explanation of what our, our thoughts are, we're excited because we want to bring our talent and our expertise into this project to make sure that the planning and the construction and management of the project are the best that it can be, because we believe as well that this project can be an asset for the city. I have three main topics that I'd like to cover. The first one is really a housekeeping item, and it's kind of a lot of the zoning topics that we've discussed previously. Secondly, I'd like to talk about, give a project overview, show you, you know, a glimpse of the project and our thoughts behind it and the planning behind it. And then finally, talk about community benefits and the benefits that this project can bring to Lancaster City. So first, let me orient everybody. We'll take a look, we're looking at the existing zoning map I have on the screen. Can everybody see my cursor? So in the north-south direction, we have North Prince Street, Queen Street. Over on the left is the Clipper Stadium. East Frederick Street runs in the east-west, west direction. So when you look at the, the map here, the area that is highlighted in red or bound by, by a red outline, it consists of eight properties. All eight properties are owned by Lancaster General or an affiliate of Lancaster General. And you can see that the existing zoning is primarily hospital complex. There is a little bit on the southern portion that is high-density residential. Hospital complex is really a zoning district that is, is solely geared towards hospital uses. And it's geared, you know, hospitals in general are, are large, large expansive buildings. And the zoning permits that. It does not permit, nor does it promote mixed use or interactions between the streetscape and the proposed development. When you look at the, when you also look at this, you can also notice that the, the hospital complex zone that is, that is contained within that red outline is really in a transitional area. It is bound to the east with hospital complex. It is bound to the north and to the south with high-density residential. And it is bound to the west and to the south, south with mixed-use zoning districts. Now I'm going to jump over and we're going to look at the zoning request that is before you tonight. The, again, in the north-south, north and south direction are Prince and Queen Streets. East and west is Frederick. Here is the stadium. And again, the site is outlined in red. The difference between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning is that the proposed zoning will, would convert the, the proposed or the, the area outlined in red to mixed-use zoning. And a few key points to kind of touch on, what is mixed-use zoning? Mixed-use zoning permits a mix of residential and commercial. Mixed-use zoning permits supportive services or uses that are supportive of both the hospital and the surrounding residential and commercial neighborhoods. Mixed-use zoning also encourages a type of development that is consistent with the surrounding area. And then finally, mixed use within this transitional area is a logical extension of the existing mixed-use district. I won't belabor this slide very much. I believe that Mr. Delf has, has already spoken to the existing planning tools that are in place. Building on strength is a a comprehensive, a economic strategic plan that's put out by the city and outlines goals and objectives for, for the economic growth within the city. And same with the county comprehensive plan. It sets out goals that are associated with the land use, with housing and the economy and job creation. And both of these plans were reviewed by the Lancaster County Planning Commission and the Lancaster City Planning Commission. And both, both, both agencies or both commissions have found that the proposed rezoning to mixed use is compatible with the goals of the county and of the city. And both, both commissions did unanimously recommend approval of the zoning change. Now, let's, let's kind of talk at a, at a very high level view of, of the project. And typically, when, when we start and we start looking at a project, we don't just look at the specific site. We look at it from, you know, a global picture and then we kind of narrow down to the uses and how those uses interact on the site. Just to orient everybody, here's Prince Street, here's Queen, Frederick, here's the stadium. And the buildings that are, that are shaded in dark gray, that again, on this, on this plan here, represents the LGH campus. Our site in question, the three and a half acres, is outlined in red and kind of shaded yellow. And then, and then we, we identified a few kind of key, key components in the neighborhood. I'll start off with the PPL substation. It's directly adjacent, it borders the property on two property lines. And certainly not a, not an attractive feature that, that, but it is a feature that we, we want to make sure we recognize and design around. We have the YMCA very close, certainly Franklin and Marshall, the Amtrak train station. And when, you know, you look at this and you, this is a very walkable community between the Lancaster General Campus, the train station, there, there are a lot of positives associated with the site. And we definitely look at the area and think that there is activation that can, that needs to occur within that street. And it relates to, it comes down to how the uses are planned on the site to, to energize that streetscape. And the uses that we're looking at are apartment, retail uses and medical. Let me clarify, the retail is really restaurant. Okay. Now, Lancaster General and Hankin Group, we have a, I'll call it a combined goal for this development and to make sure that the, it is designed as a healthy community. ULI or Urban Land Institute is a, they're a recognized planning agency, planning group. And they have put out a list and recommendations as far as what, what kind of guideline, what, what are the rules that you should follow in creating a healthy community? And I'll boil, I'll boil this list down to three really key components. It's high-quality land planning, it's high-quality construction, and it's high-quality management. When it relate, as it relates to planning, it goes in and it kind of, and it guides, it encourages, I should say, a mix of uses, well-connected streets and high-quality recreational places. As it relates to construction and the type of construction, it's really promoting healthy indoor air. And that, that relates to using, using carpet and glues and paints that, that are low VOC emitting compounds. It also, it also relates to a constant fresh air coming into the building to make sure that you're providing that healthy environment for the people who are either working or living in the facility. And then management. Management really, it, it goes to how the building operates and how the people and utilize it. It encourages pet-friendly, pet-friendly places, no smoking, healthy food and, and healthy food. And that kind of relates to the, the type of restaurant that would be proposed with the project. I did put in here because we actually just, I do believe that, that management is a key component of what it takes to make a healthy community. You can build the best building and if you don't operate it under those kind of guidelines, then you, you kind of, you lose that healthy aspect. We have just been ranked first in the nation for management of, of apartment, apartment management. And I was very proud of that and wanted to pass that along to you. So now, what I'd like to do is kind of dive into the project and narrow the, the discussion down a little bit further as far as the, the uses, how they could fit on the site and, and the intention of them. So I'd like to start in the southeast corner, the medical office building. You heard Brian mention that the office building, he's looking for approximately a 30,000-square-foot medical office building that they can locate urgent care and, and, and other types of medical, medical facilities within that building. That, it would be a three-story building that is located directly opposite of the existing parking garage located on Queen Street. Now, just north of there, you can see that there is a, an access that would be proposed. That access would come back. And if there is drop-off necessary, drop-off area would be provided for the medical office building. And it also provides access into the parking structure. The parking structure has been strategically placed in this location. It's strategic for multiple, multiple reasons. One, it screens the substation. So the PPL substation is located here. So the medical office building and residential unit, residential units that are located just north of there, they're all screened, their views are blocked in that substation. It also provides certainly the necessary parking for the medical office building and, and the residential uses. So continuing north, north on Queen and along Frederick Street, you can see multifamily residential buildings. And these buildings, again, they come around and we end up back over at the PPL substation. But if you notice, the leg of the building that is, that parallels the substation is much narrower than the other legs. And that's because we, we're looking at it as a single-loaded corridor. So that basically, what that means is residential units that are within this portion of the building front the courtyard. And they do not have, they do not have, you know, some, we do not have any residential units then that front on the PPL substation. So making sure that all units have quality views and outlooks onto the community. You also notice that there are two courtyards. The courtyard, the western courtyard, we envision this more as a private courtyard. It's, you know, it could be a quiet setting, it's a place where people, residents of the, of the community can come, they relax. Possibly there's a pool in there, a kind of a, we'll say more of a tranquil setting. And the eastern courtyard, I'll call that more of a quasi-public environment. And the reason that is, is because we believe that the corner of Frederick and Queen Street is a very desirable location for that first-floor restaurant. And to activate that streetscape, and not only that, but what we'd like to do is carry that activity through the building and through the restaurant and into the courtyard. So that this courtyard becomes a much more active environment. It's a fun place to be, it's a place that's, that's utilized not just by the residents, it's utilized by, by the restaurants and the patrons. So this is a, this is a more kind of detailed view of, of the project and our proposal. I'm going to, I'm going to zoom in a little bit closer now to the intersection of Frederick and Queen Street. Now, here, here you can see how the retail area is used to activate that streetscape. Above the retail and to the size of the retail, that's residential units, those are residential areas. Last month, you asked me several questions about who will live here, how many units and rent ranges. Please understand, we're still in a, in a conceptual stage here, but I do want to provide some additional information and, and feedback based on, on some research that we've been doing over the past, past several, several weeks. So who can live here? Anybody can live here, we don't, we have no restrictions on our apartments. That being said, we are located adjacent to Lancaster General Hospital and the city's largest employer. We are located within walking distance to the train station and we are targeting a healthy lifestyle. You put those components together, and I do believe that this project's going to be very inviting to Lancaster General employees. It's a good thing for the success of the project. It's a good thing for the success of Lancaster. It's, it's a good tool for Lancaster General in their, in, for them in recruiting, recruit, recruiting, sorry, and retaining staff. In today's competitive environment, today's competitive, workplace competitive environment, the, the area around the workplace is very important. Meaning the living experience, the eating experience, the general lifestyle, they are all tools in helping to recruit and retain talent for any business. Now I want to get into density and unit counts and the types of units. Right now, we're, we're anticipating approximately 230 units. Like I said, the, the details aren't, aren't refined, but that's a very good approximate, approximation. These units will be a mix of efficiencies, one bedrooms and two bedroom units. So from a size per sec perspective, an efficiency unit is approximately 575 square feet. A one-bedroom unit is approximately 800 square feet. And a two-bedroom unit is approximately 1,200 square feet. Rents, rents on this project will range from the low end of $1,000 a unit to approximately $2,000 a unit. There's a very, a very wide range in rents. Now I'm sliding over south on Queen Street and looking at the 30,000-square-foot medical office building. So this is as if you're standing on Queen Street looking south. It's a conceptual, a concept that really, a lot of massing diagram, primarily massing diagram of the medical office building. You can see the residential building on the right-hand side. And what I like about this, this image is the fact that you can hardly see the parking structure, right? And it's planned that way, just as much as we are utilizing the parking structure to block or create a barrier up against the PPL substation. We also do not want that to impede the streetscape of Queen or Frederick Street because that's the activity area where we want people to be encouraged to walk up and down that streetscape. And then the final, the final topic that, that I mentioned are the project benefits. I believe the project has many benefits, but so it's not to take up, take up too much time. We're going to narrow it down to, to four. The first one being an increased access to medical service. By constructing the new medical office building and by locating the urgent care By constructing the new medical office building and by locating the urgent care Lancaster General, General's urgent care facility over here. They are, will be able to. Increase the amount of hours and increase access to the surround, to the neighborhood and and the surrounding areas. Today, the current urgent care has has limited hours, whereas this facility will will not be restricted and access will be. Will be improved. Attracting talent. Lancaster General works hard to bring youth into the hospital, educate them. They want them to stay, they want them to become employees, they want them to become active members of the community. This project will hopefully become a tool for them in 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 utilize in. In meeting those needs of of future, future employees. Jobs. Quantity jobs and quality of jobs. This project has the ability to bring in jobs in several areas. First of all, in the in the development and in the construction phase, there are many jobs that will be created over. Over that period. To to actually build the facilities. And then once we you get out of that temporary zone, that temporary phase, you get into permanent jobs. And there will be jobs that are created. With within both the mixed use building, the medical office building. I see that there, you know, you're looking at. Doctors, nurses, administrative staff, waiters, waitresses, cooks. Leasing professionals, you're looking at maintenance staff, all these P, all these jobs that will be created as part of this project. Rough estimates, we're looking, we're estimating approximately a hundred and twenty, twenty jobs. Throughout this project, throughout, we're created by this three and a half acres. That does not take into account any jobs. The economy. Boost that occurs by the people and by the employees that will be living in here and utilizing the services. Throughout the community. And then finally, taxes. The project is anticipated to provide an increased tax base to Lancaster City and also to the school district. So we believe that there are 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 many positives that will will come about as part of this project. And that. Then I would turn it over for for discussions and questions from from city council.
Excuse me, I'm a court reporter and I did not get a chance to swear anybody in because I was muted. So I'm just going to ask if all of you can. Just answer whether your testimony that you've already given is the truth and all of the truth and. That you can just swear affirm it, that's the case at this point.
This is Brian Burgeson, I swear that.
All right, thank you.
Neil Fisher, so do I. I swear that as well.
Thank you.
And Lisa, this is John Lines, I swear it as well, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa, for for catching that and thank you for being on track this evening. Mister Harris or Mister Delft. Is it, is it fair to say that we have this presentation entered as an exhibit just for the sake of the record or?
Mister Harris, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, I believe we do, Mister President.
Okay, well then, since this is the first exhibit that I'm aware of, we'll call it. I'm sorry, to the court reporter, your name was Lisa, how do you prefer to be addressed?
You can just call me Lisa, that is fine.
I don't know what nomenclature we use or what numbering system, A or one, but let's. Let's go ahead and have this recorded as the first exhibit and while we're here, are there any other. Plans or documents or presentations that ought to be entered into the record from the applicant? That that's just to say, John, Neil, do you have anything else you want us to see to be part of the official record that we don't already have?
Yes, Mister Davis, could, could you just run through our application, please?
I mean, this is Mike Davis from Barley Snyder and I also swear and affirm anything I say is the truth. I would ask that our our entire application as submitted be marked, since you've already marked this presentation as applicants number one. We would ask that our application as submitted be marked as applicants exhibit number two. I would also ask that the proof of publication that the city ended up securing from the newspaper. Indicating that this has been advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code be marked as applicants. Number three. And then I would also ask that a copy of the postings that were marked around the property at least seven days in advance of the hearing. Which the city also posted, that that be marked as applicants number four.
Okay, I believe that we can do all that. Mister Harris, Mister Delft, do you need any assistance in. Securing those things for the record or do you have all of them?
We have most of them. Mister Fisher, if you can send me the PowerPoint electronically, I'd appreciate that by email.
I'll do.
Great, he's being embarrassed at City of Lancaster. Thank you, Mister Fisher.
President, I'm sorry to interrupt. One quick point of process, I wanted to back up just a little bit and give a little bit of. Additional context, wanted to declare clear for the counselors and for the public that's listening that. A lot of the presentation that the LGH team gave today was really to try to provide. As much forward looking as we could in terms of vision and and concept for the site. We still, after zoning stage of land development, we still will have a very in-depth. Land development process and historic review process as well. So I just wanted to be clear that a lot of. Images that were shown today was really. Trying to provide the best sense of what is, what could come for the site. Even though a lot of those decisions haven't yet been finalized yet, it typically comes after the zoning stage and so this is a little bit unusual. It just wanted to be, make note of that.
Thank you, Mister Delft. Can we have the screen back? Great, thank you. So we'll begin prioritizing comments or questions. From members of council. Are there any comments or questions from counselors?
Thank you so much, Council President. I I just would like to say I appreciate. The thoroughness of your presentation this evening. Very simply put.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Other counselors.
If I may, Mister President.
Of course.
I just want to thank our visitors today that, you know, thanks for the thorough presentation and. Expanding on the community impact that this project has the potential to have. As we continue to move forward, I hope you continue to share that story and, you know, that way the public is aware of. Of all the cool things that this project can can potentially have. So just wanted to thank you on expanding on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Garcia Molina.
So I guess also I have a one question for the city, one question for the developers. I do want to thank you as well because you've shown a commitment to answering. Every single question that we had, every concern that we have, you didn't see it as something to be defensive of out. But in turn to open up discussions, I know you've talked to many of us one on one to really dig into. Why we had so much hesitation and at no point did I feel that you were all combative, but quite the opposite, really ready to jump in and prove that. This is a community driven project. I appreciate the letters of community support that you've gotten from community stakeholders like Community Foundation. Which is just further showing to us that your intentionality continues to be. To be a part of the community, really, to sum it up, and I really appreciate that. And so I guess the only question that I had left, because a lot of this presentation was about. The importance of this really being something attractive to the employees. Is there anything in place or conversations taking place of incentivizing this property outside of location to employees?
John, do you want to speak to the program we have for homeownership in the neighborhoods around the hospital?
For about fifteen, almost twenty years, we've had something called Home in the City, which has enabled first time home buyers. That are employed by Lancaster General. We've been be able to provide down payment assistance. As well as loaned and no interest loans for employees who would like to do some home improvements that are in the city. We've been able to work through a lot of that program with Franklin Marshall over the number of years. We've contributed more than two and a half million toward home purchases in the city, which has been a great way to leverage. That work. Now that's homeownership, which is not necessarily rental, but but nevertheless, that is one way to. To move people to be even more invested in the city, which is something that's important to us. And we've been able to work that with Franklin Marshall and also talk, have discussions with other employers in the city to see if that program. Maybe able to be duplicated in other areas of the city to, you know, show how important it is to provide that level. One of the challenges is we do have employees who are, who have rentals and other other areas of the city, so. Certainly something for us to consider as to what extent we can provide support for for employees.
Perfect, it's a curiosity that I had as I saw that come up time and time again, but again, I really appreciate. Each of you and your commitment to really not trying to speed up this process for business matters, but to really listen and. Be a part of the process. And then I guess my next question really is, where are we in the strategic planning? Phase of updating that, because for me, and this is something that I expressed to. To the developers and LGH is that my hesitation here is. Not necessarily the zoning matter or aspect. That we are having to decide here, but more the uncomfortable. Decision making that I'm kind of having to do around zoning and the overall picture of what the city looks like. Because I think what I'm seeing is that a lot of the development is matching the city and the county planning commission's plans. But they have a technical understanding of planning that as a council member, I do not to make these important decisions and they're also. Like the primary decision makers on what that plan looks like and so not really having that privilege. I would want to kind of see how we can get that ball rolling a little bit faster or where we are at. So that the community can have input on that, council can have input on that, as we are asked to make more and more zoning change decisions. That are impacting a bigger amount of space and it's not just like a little pot here and a little pot there.
So that's a great question, Counselor, related to the timeline of the comprehensive planning process. I'm going to kick this question over to to Chris, but I just want to. Express to you that we are very eager to get the comprehensive planning process started. And as part of the transition between Randy Patterson and Chris, we were specifically hiring. For someone who had experience in the comprehensive planning process, recognizing that that was, that that was, is a continued priority. I will say before, the other thing I'll say is that COVID has. Caused a delay in our ability to get started, but we are engaged in the pre-planning efforts and I'll let Chris respond with more detail.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are very eager to get started. I appreciate the question. If you ask any planner who has experience, they'll tell you that zoning should follow land use. That means there should be a set of priorities and a vision for land use for the city. Luckily, we do have documents that provide some guidance. That said, I will feel much more comfortable once we have. An up to date comp plan for the city. Although COVID has presented a lot of challenges, I will say. That we've actually made a lot of progress over the last four to six months on scoping of. Of the comp plan. We actually have a draft scope of work that we are preparing to send out, a request for proposals. We've also been working very closely with the city alliance and other stakeholders to establish a comp plan committee who will help. Govern that process once we get it off the ground. Really looking at twenty twenty-one as the. As the kickoff to the plan and I do want to caution, comp plan is probably a minimum of a two year process. So we will be starting it very soon, but it doesn't mean that we will necessarily be finishing it very soon. And we may have other rezonings that come before us before comp plan is complete. In a perfect world, a comp plan will be done and will have guidance, but even after a comp plan is adopted, you do have situations where. Property owners or the city in some cases do come before council with a rezoning, so it's not. Not necessarily unusual, but I I do take your broader point that we'll be in a much better place once we have come plan. Not, not just the document itself, but the process that creates that document, because I think it's the process. And the community engagement that is so essential, it's to sort of that education and buy in. That you mentioned, Counselor.
I appreciate that, because I understand that COVID definitely has impacted stuff, but it hasn't impacted. The decisions that are coming before us and I feel like the decisions that are coming before us are pretty large pieces, especially in comparison to. Things that were happening right before regarding zoning. And so I guess. Where I want to kind of follow that up with and it might be, I don't know who this question would be towards is. Is there anything in place between now and that two year end process for conversations to take place? That would speak to what the comp plan would do for us in terms of analyzing the need. In the community on like a data point level and also. For us to have discussions as a community and as council in partnership with the city administration to prioritize and be on the same page. Not that we're not at the moment, but to kind of know what the broader picture is, because right now. I think that's where I'm seeing a little kind of. Division, at least in the decision making process for me is that I don't understand necessarily what the bigger picture for all of us is, because we haven't really had the opportunity. To sit down and come up with that and I think. Even with this, the zoning issue wasn't necessarily, is this meeting the zoning question? But my uncomfortability of making that zoning decision without really understanding. The broader spectrum of what we want the city to look like in five or ten years.
Can I just weigh in first?
Of course, of course.
So I I would like to continue this conversation about. How. The import of the comprehensive plan and and the, and and I guess the milestones, the. That are helping us along the way. What I will say also is that this is not precluding us from having conversations or. Advancing some of the. Research and thinking around affordable housing, for example. And I would also say that while there will be, there may be changes to the zoning map. The, the. The history of our city and where residential districts are and where commercial districts are and so on was laid out long ago. And because we only have seven point two square miles, I just don't want to over emphasize the zoning. Part of this as part of the comprehensive plan, that the zoning pieces of this are important as a part of a comprehensive. But I don't see radical changes to that, just given. The physical physicality of the city at this moment.
I agree with that, I appreciate that. I think the zoning aspect here is unique and that the zoning is. Tied then directly to land use and what comes afterwards, but I really appreciate this conversation, it's super helpful. And then we'll definitely continue to build benchmarks or have this conversation in the future too.
And Mayor, just to echo or pick up on one thing you said about milestones, since the comp plan will be a two year process. We're going to be learning a lot as we go, so there will be foundational studies, research and analysis that's happening. Really, the beginning of that process, in addition to a committee, a core cop plan committee. Will probably have a series of technical advisory boards as well for different topics, who will have a technical advisory board that's focused on land use. And possibly zoning. Who will have a technical advisory board that's focused on land use and possibly zoning. I think we'll be able to start to pull out some of the lessons learned through the process even before the plan itself is adopted. When it comes to a particular site or a collection of sites, and we have a zoning question that happens before comp plan is, the next comp plan is adopted, I would say the appropriate place is really the planning commission. I mean, that's one of their core roles. And, and why we, we bring it before them, before it goes to council. So I think that's just another important thing to keep in mind. They help provide that context for us.
Thank you. That's it for me, President.
Thank you, Councilor Garcia-Molina. Other members of council. Going once. Going twice. All right. Counselors, this is our hearing. So if you need to cycle back in with, with questions, of course, you'll, you'll be permitted to do so. But I will now open it up to comment from members of the public per the rules of this hearing. Ms. Strazo, would you please let Ms. Voludes in first? Hey, hey. We'll feedback there. Well, just oh, sorry about that. Just as per usual, do try to limit your comments to three minutes. And just start with telling us your name and the block that you live on. And if you're representing an organization, what organization that is.
Okay, good evening. So I assume Cal can hear me then. Izzy, can you confirm that? Okay, perfect. Good evening, Council. I'm Heather Voludes. I'm the Community Impact Director with the Lancaster Chamber. We are at 115 East King Street in Lancaster City. I'm just here tonight to express chamber's support for the LGH Queen and Frederick Project. The chamber continually supports a variety of housing projects that provide quality housing in your job centers. And we recognize that the increasing need for housing that is available to our county's workforce and also planning goals and advances the well-being of our communities. Specific to this project, I just want to share a few reasons why we are supportive. First, we have been engaged for many years in initiatives aimed at supporting third cities. As was shared, this project is estimated to generate substantial tax revenue for both the city and the school district. And there are a few options for new revenues. So while this will not fill the gap, projects such as this are a step forward. Second, as we've seen for a few years, and with COVID certainly advancing this at a more rapid speed, there's more of an emphasis on the complete neighborhood concept. Clustering doctors' offices, schools, small-scale offices and other items close to where people are living makes more options reachable by foot or by the inclusion of the medical office building makes urgent care and family practice more readily available in the area. And third, and tied a bit to the second point, is that COVID has, without a doubt, resulted in many companies assessing their work from home policies. They're providing more options for long-term remote and are looking into smaller, more dispersed offices closer to where employees live. Additionally, we're seeing and will continue to see the disrupted retail and restaurant industries try to us. And a key component to their success will be the ongoing engagement and support from those who are living or working from home in proximity to their venues. As the city looks to the future, supporting residential is also supporting employment and in turn, supporting industries who are recovering. We appreciate your thoughtful review of this important project and ask that you recognize the impacts this project will have. That concludes my remarks and thanks to council for hearing us.
Thank you, Ms. Voludes. Great. Ms. Strazo, would you please, please add who I believe is Lisa Riggs to the meeting?
Good afternoon or good evening, Council. This is Lisa Riggs. Can every, I can see nodding heads so people can hear me. Great. So Lisa Riggs, President of the Economic Development Company. Business address is 115 East King Street, and I am here representing the EDC. I just want to add a few additional comments. It's been a pretty thorough presentation this evening, so I don't want to go back over some of the points that were raised. So I just have three things I'd like to offer for council's consideration. I am here in strong support of this project. I've had a relationship with Lancaster General now for almost 20 years. And as I started my career in Lancaster doing economic development in the city of Lancaster, and LG was one of the first partners at the table with me. The three quick points I want to make is the Economic Development Company's core business is about the retention and expansion of, of companies in the community and helping them to stay and grow here. A lot of what you heard in the front part of both John's presentation and Mr. Fisher's presentation is that there are direct benefits to Lancaster General as a major employer. I think they did a great job of outlining that. And, and that's great, because they're a major employer and it's really important for employers to have the capacity to expand and to focus on retention of employees and the talent attraction. These are critical strategies that we have across the county with many employers, large and small. A second point is, and I think it was acknowledged by many of the council members in your comments after the presentation, Lancaster General is an institutional stakeholder. And what that means is not only have they been in the community for a long period of time, their intention is to continue to be in the, in the community for a long period of time. From a development standpoint, why does that matter? It's because they're not looking at a three, five, 10-year quick return on a project. They're looking at a return that could be decades or in some cases centuries. And so quality really matters. Integration with the community really matters. Ensuring that they're representing the community because they're part of the community fabric really matters. And I think, you know, some of what I picked up in council's comments after the presentation was you've been talking to representatives from Lancaster General and they listen. And this is not new to this project. This is my experience with this employer and community stakeholder for many, many years. The third point I would just add, again, from the economic development perspective is, you know, we've all been through a ridiculously crazy and uncertain time over the past few months and are continuing that journey together. Every economic forecast that we've seen shows continued economic pain, unfortunately. And so from an economic development perspective right now, part of what EDC is really focused on is strongly encouraging that projects that are ready to advance that can show confidence in a community, that can show the underpinnings of economic certainty in a community, need to get moving. There's nothing better as a signal of economic confidence than construction. Clearly, there's economic impacts like construction jobs and things like that, but there's a psychological impact in communities when you see development happening. And in talking with my peers in other counties and in other communities, Lancaster and the city of Lancaster is always been at the forefront and continues to be with major projects of investment dollars that you're, that you're hearing today, even though the plans are still conceptual. The, the fact that you have developers that are interested in investing in Lancaster is a hugely positive signal and one that we would strongly encourage. So with those brief remarks, again, I appreciate the council's time. EDC is, is pleased to support this project and we would encourage your support as you deliberate later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. We have a phone call, a hand raised. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, it's Tony Dastro from New Holland Avenue.
Hey, Mr. Dastro, please continue.
Okay, so, um, the, the interesting thing I've been thinking about throughout this entire conversation is that we've been talking about LGH and not Penn Medicine. I feel as though this is an opportunity for Penn Medicine to really show that they want to be an institutional stakeholder in our community. And on top of that, I think we need to talk more about the school district because of that. Like Penn Medicine directly relates to the University of Pennsylvania, an Ivy League school. This project, I think, will do amazing things for our community, no doubt. However, I think if we're not making sure that the students who are coming through the school district Lancaster and just the city of Lancaster in general, don't have more access and opportunity to make it into a university as well-recognized as the University of Pennsylvania, we need to make sure those students are, they have that pipeline so that they can be the employees that Lancaster General, Penn Medicine hopes to attract in five to 10 years. I think we need to see a considerable investment from this institutional stakeholder in our school district even more than what we've potentially already seen. I think that's the most important thing here for me. I think we need more, I think we need to hear more about the educational aspects for our future employees here.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro.
Thank you.
Any response or would you, I'm happy to respond, I think, as, as it relates to our relationship with the school district of Lancaster.
Mr. Lyons, if you would like to, that would be welcome.
Sure. So one of the, we've been doing this for, gosh, I think maybe 20 years for for the health and well-being of the students of this, of the school district of Lancaster, we have been doing a number of school-based health clinics. And one of the things that's so important is the, is the health and well-being of those students so that they can feel healthy. And in some, in some instances, actually, those school clinics are the only primary care provider for those students. We've been doing it, I know at Carter McCray for a number of years, as well as Washington Elementary, I believe, as well as the high school. And look continuously to work with their school nurses to broaden wherever possible the, the relationship that they can build with the students. And oftentimes their families as well, because sometimes the medical counseling is, is again, that connection that's established. The other thing, too, is our pilot payment, which we provide the school district of Lancaster, 1.5 million in either cash and services every year, which I know means a lot to the school district. Also, too, we've been working with the school district as well as other districts in the county around COVID education, so that parents and students and teachers alike can feel comfortable knowing and getting their, getting their questions answered as it relates to the pandemic and ways to protect themselves as well as their students and, and family members and the like. I do want to say that Lancaster General Health is part of Penn Medicine. And everything that we do is connected to Penn Medicine as well. And, and I think that certainly the, our connections that we have in Philadelphia are very well aware of and very supportive of our efforts to continually invest in the city as well as the school district is. But I think you bring up a great point, which is, what are ways in which we can further expand and strengthen the educational opportunities and ultimately employment opportunities for those students? Because what we want to do is to invest locally so those students and their families can benefit from our, our status here as an anchor institution in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Are there any other public comments for this hearing? Not seeing any hands raised.
Council President.
Councilor Baker.
Never mind. I think Amber got it. I just wanted to make note that I didn't see Councilor Diaz on the panel, but I see she's just been added back. Never mind.
Excellent. So I will give council comments one final round. Okay, well, we've heard from the applicant. We've heard council comments and public comments. We've had exhibits entered. So unless there is an objection, I will go ahead and close this public hearing on the zoning amendment. And we resume the rest of our agenda, if you'll bear with me for just a second. All right. Mr. Harris, do we have any interim reports of committees of council?
We do not.
Excellent. That moves us into our legislative agenda, beginning with the Heritage Conservation District, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Consider the following application recommendation from the Historical Commission for improvements to a property within the Heritage Conservation District. We have one tonight. David Lewis and, and Bell of Aqua, owners of 522 Race Avenue, proposed construction of a new covered front porch on the house's facade. And that recommend, that application was recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
Okay. Great. Do we have a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We have the documentation forwarded and it seems largely pretty straightforward. Do counselors, are there any council comments? Okay, I'll pause briefly to allow comments from the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia-Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye. All right. That moves us into ordinances for final passage. Pardon me. Administration Bill Number 62020. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. In ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain tracts of land on North Queen Street, West Frederick Street, and North Prince Street in the city of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, from Hospital Complex District, HC, and High Density Residential District, R4, to Mix Use District, MU, and to change the zoning map accordingly. Title, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. For everybody watching along at home, this is the part of the evening where we would ostensibly vote on the zoning change that we had the public hearing about. But we've had this over three meetings, had a number of council comments and questions. Obviously, it is your, it is your prerogative. So council comments. Yep, I think we've pretty much engaged in this one very, very deeply and probably as deep as we can go at this moment in time. So I will pause for comments or questions from the public. I believe we have Mr. Dastro again.
So Tony Dastro, New Holland Avenue again. I wanted to say, Mr., I think, sorry, my screen's actually hiding your name, but I think it, your name is John. John Hines. But anyway, I appreciate your response. I just want to tell the public is generally how I'm viewing this project since the presentation. To me, this feels like a real extension of a college campus in a sense. The investment, I think, will be good for the community. I think the taxes are considerably high and it will be a benefit. But I definitely want to just finalize that point and hit hard that we do need to open up and have a serious conversation about how we can support educational opportunities for students, especially when we're talking about how these projects will affect us in the five to 10-year long term. Yeah, I'm a little overwhelmed by this project, to be honest. This is my first glimpse at that as a whole. I, I'm very impressed. And I hope to see a very strong relationship built with University of Pennsylvania and School District Lancaster in the long term.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro.
No, this is, Mr. Council President, actually, if I could, this is the last time we'll be in front of you. So, you know, that might be, that might be something that we could add as we talk and present to council or planning commission in the future. I'd be happy to, to explore that a little bit more. I think it's a great point.
Thank you. And I will say, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Davis, if you're not familiar with Mr. Dastro, he's not the easiest person in the world to impress. So you can stick that feather in your cap. he's not the easiest person in the world to impress, so, um, you can stick that feather in your cap. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any additional, uh, public comments, and I know that it's taken us some time to get here. Uh, so, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye. Sorry.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye. Okay, it is hereby rezoned.
Thank you for your time and consideration. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
For your time.
Neil, John, Brian, Michael, uh, we appreciate all your time, um, and particularly the example you set, uh, in the amount of effort you put forth into reaching out, uh, to members of council, including myself. It, it does make a difference.
A second now.
So you guys, uh, you can stick around if civic engagement floats your boat, but, um, you're relieved for the evening.
Have a good night.
And I'm just letting you know the court reporter is going to sign out at this point as well.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, which brings us to Administration Bill Number 92020. Um, this is, uh, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Administration Bill Number 92020, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. In ordinance of the City, of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, amending Chapter 55 of the Code of the City of Lancaster, Officers and Employees, Article 4, Council Section 5512, Rules and Regulations, Subpart C, Time of Meetings, to change the time of regularly scheduled meetings of City Council from 7:30 PM to 6:30 PM, or such other times as may be approved by a majority vote of council, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, so what I need here, and I'll explain in a second, uh, is actually a, a motion, uh, to table. Um, we're looking at some, um, tinkering to the final version of the, uh, of the ordinance, just some safeguards, um, and need to make sure that, uh, the final version of the ordinance, um, which, uh, was not advertised, uh, to actually be voted on at this meeting, um, can, uh, can actually be legally voted on. And so with that, uh, we would need a motion to move this to the September 8th meeting of council.
Motion to table until the September 8th meeting?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you all very much. Council comments.
Just that I still think it's a good idea.
You know.
Yep. Um, from the public. Okay, uh, hearing none. Mr. Harris.
A vote on motion to table.
Indeed.
Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye. All right, so we'll take this up again at the first meeting of council, uh, in September. Um, that brings us to our second public comment period, reserved for, uh, items not on the agenda, as I say every time. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less and start with your name and the block that you live on. Um, so if anybody would like to make a public comment, now's your time. Mr. Dastro.
Uh, Tony Dastro, New Holland Avenue. I'm just feeling a little extra, I guess, playful tonight. Um, I want to say that I'm also impressed with you guys and how you've coordinated your communication efforts for city council, uh, since COVID started. Uh, I, I mean, I'm over here at home engaging and I wouldn't even be able to do this in the way I had livestreamed government meetings. So I'm very content with this system right now. Uh, I appreciate you guys for continuing the work that you do. Uh, and just putting it out there, my birthday's tomorrow, so I heard you talk about hanging pieces of paper on a wall. If you want to send me something for, uh, that livestreaming in the past, I, I would not be opposed. I'll hang that right on my wall. Um, but, I appreciate all you guys and, um, this has been a pleasure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dastro. Um, while you're still on the line, um, let, uh, let me go ahead and say, uh, that, uh, much of the work you did, uh, put us on the path to be, uh, where we are now. So, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, we all really appreciate it, um, for the four other people who are, uh, who are, uh, still watching though, or maybe watching, um, via Facebook Live. Um, uh, I think, you know, at the very least, uh, Mr. Dastro, uh, you deserve a round of applause and we'll, we'll see about something else. Um, so, you know, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate those comments. And yeah, you guys have a good night and stay safe.
Y'all, when was the last time we got some, like, genuine, unqualified positive feedback? Anyway, uh, anybody else for a public comment?
To add to that comment, um, in addition to happy birthday, I want to thank Amber for a lot of the work, because I think it quickly went from day to night, from night to day. Uh, and so I'm really grateful, um, both to Tony for what he pioneered and for Amber coming on board and helping us all out.
Ditto.
Thank you, Amber. Seth, you took away my thumbs and clapping emojis, but.
I guess panelists don't have those, sorry.
Uh, I believe that takes us into, uh, the report of the mayor. Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you. And I second that. Um, it's so nice to hear positive feedback. Uh, so, uh, I will jump in. Uh, on June the 5th, I made a commitment, uh, to implement citywide anti-racism and anti-bias training following the week of protests here in the city of Lancaster. I wanted to share, uh, an update, uh, with all of you about that, and also a change of direction, one that I hope you will agree is a change, uh, for the better. So prior to June 5th, uh, back in 2018, the city, uh, became a member of the Government Alliance, um, on Race and Equity. It's an organization called GARE. And we, um, we were beginning to build our capacity to, uh, work through the legacy issues of poverty, improve community police interactions, uh, and really just, uh, incorporate a racial equity lens in the work that we were doing. So the GARE membership, along with our strategic plan, building a stronger Lancaster block by block, set the stage for, uh, the work that's being continued today. In addition to the establishment of our core values, adding clarity to the expectations for each department, bureau, and employee, and those core values are quality, teamwork, integrity, and respect. So combined, uh, those, uh, three things, uh, really did lay a foundation, uh, for, uh, this work to continue. And the pivot that we are making, again, I'm using that word, um, is basically to kick up, uh, this effort, uh, by several notches. We are going far and above, uh, doing training. Uh, we are, uh, taking DEI, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion to, uh, a much, uh, higher level and integrating it more fully in, uh, all aspects of the city operations. I'm pleased to say that, um, you know, as we've been building our capacity since 2018, with staff attending the GARE conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico, uh, learning more about the GARE model for addressing racial equity, networking with other member cities, and, uh, and our staff returning back to Lancaster with tools to help be more formally begin this DEI journey. Uh, that led to the formation of, the start of a formation of a DEI committee, uh, that really began in earnest in May of 2020, uh, with, uh, Steve Campbell, our Director of Public Works, Angie, uh, William, sorry, Angie, I'm butchering your last name, Bureau Chief of Human Resources, and Sharon Allen Span, uh, who then was the Assistant Bureau Chief and is now the Leadership, uh, Development and Diversity Manager. So this committee, uh, sought ways to identify and introduce this concept of DEI to employees using, uh, all available resources and a very small budget. We began collecting, uh, data about employee experiences, employee demographics, and employee evaluations. A resource bank was compiled, uh, through Microsoft Teams, uh, to help get us started and oriented to this work. Additionally, we discussed the engagement potential, uh, for consultants to help us create a more formal strategy that was, uh, uh, more inclusive than just addressing, uh, DEI training or racial or anti-bias training. So through detailed conversations, uh, led by our Bureau of Human Resources, uh, we ultimately selected McLean and Company to support us in our ongoing efforts. McLean and Company is a research and advisory firm that's located in Toronto, Canada, and they provide coaching and materials that allow us to do the work ourselves, uh, which is also helping us keep the cost down. The entire, uh, cost for, for this engagement is $30,000. And we can use, uh, as much of coaching and support as we want, and so we are taking full, uh, and full advantage of this, and even going beyond some of the DEI work and, uh, also looking at some of the salary study tools that they can offer and so on. So this, uh, support, uh, provides a roadmap for us, weekly check-ins, tools and resources for troubleshooting. And as I mentioned, this is inclusive of DEI, but also extends beyond that. Since our engagement with McLean and Company in July of 2020, the DEI Committee, uh, has expanded beyond Steve, Angie, and Sharon, uh, and, uh, has begun to, uh, ramp up data collection and analysis. So we have, uh, subsequently rolled this out to our, uh, leadership team, our managers across, uh, the city. Uh, about 61 of people participated in that call. The goal was really to introduce the focus of DEI and to chair our strategy partner, and also to outline what is next. And this is really what I wanted you to hear tonight. Our work will begin with McLean's, uh, four-step process to create our People First DEI Strategy. Our first step, uh, is to really amp up the assessment, which includes data collection across the organization, employee survey, and, uh, the formalizing of our DEI strategy team. We're working with McLean to prepare, uh, the launch of the Employee Engagement Survey. That survey will be sent to all employees. Employees will have the option to respond in English or in Spanish, and the goal is to launch that survey by the end of September. The second step is really to, uh, hone in on the focus of DEI, uh, within the organization of the city of Lancaster. The strategy team is going to perform a SWOT analysis using the data collected in Step 1. We've already begun to do that work as part of the executive leadership team, defining an overall arching purpose, connecting that purpose with our strategic priorities, and set goals and metrics. One of the things that we've learned from McLean and one of the ways that this, uh, this work has really fallen short and other, uh, companies and organizations across the globe is by jumping in and doing training before really aligning the training and the need, with the needs within the organization and making sure that that's tailored. This does mean that we will still be doing some amount of training, uh, but we are really going to have that training be guided, uh, by the feedback from our, uh, employees. Step 3 is really about determining the governance model, um, who's going to be minding, uh, the store, so to speak, in terms of making sure that this is moving forward. And there will certainly be a role to play, uh, for council to play in this, uh, governance model, and also to select the DEI initiatives. Uh, so we'll clarify roles, responsibilities, establish committees, likely there'll be subcommittees, examine the life cycle of the employee from a DEI lens, uh, meaning from recruitment all the way through hiring, onboarding, ongoing performance, uh, and evaluation, promotion, and so on. And, uh, and then we'll really be launching, uh, the DEI strategies to build based on our customized action plans, uh, that are very department-specific and, uh, get going. This, uh, DEI plan, as I mentioned, will, will include training, but we are really looking at this as, um, much more holistic effort across all of the city, uh, departments and bureaus, as well as our policies, as well as, um, uh, the lens in which we make decisions, and just those decisions, uh, as it relates to how services are delivered, uh, how public funds are spent, and so on. So I look forward, uh, to sharing with you and the public our progress in the months ahead and, and in working with you as partners in this effort as, uh, we get started. This is definitely a marathon and not a sprint. We are, uh, really committed to engaging in this work over the course of, uh, years to come. And I hope that the seeds that we've sown over these last couple of years and the partnership with McLean, uh, really bears fruit for our community and, uh, as a consequence, will make us even better placed, uh, to work and, uh, a more, and, and better able to serve and meet the needs of our diverse residents. Uh, thank you for this opportunity, council.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. Um, that, uh, brings us to, uh, my report, um, which consists, uh, primarily of three items. First, um, I want to take, uh, just a moment to, since we were already on the train anyway, just to shout out city staff, uh, in general, um, for the ways in which they are adjusting and adapting in, uh, what are almost certainly some of the most challenging and chaotic times, uh, of their careers. So everything from, uh, you know, keeping the building from falling over to supporting this meeting to, uh, uh, the city clerk, Bernie Harris, who has to hope against hope in trying to keep me organized, um, to, uh, really just to, to everybody. Um, I really do think that we have, uh, some of the best employees, uh, of any municipal government, and I've gotten to know quite a few. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, second is just for anybody watching here or on Facebook, do want to, uh, clarify something, um, per the council meeting on the 11th. Uh, on Thursday at 6:00 PM, we will have a special meeting of council exclusively for the purpose of the public hearing on the zoning amendment, pardon me, regarding the site at 250 College Avenue. Pardon me. That will take, uh, largely the same procedural form that the meeting, uh, this evening took. Uh, though, um, documents and comments, uh, may be submitted, uh, in advance. More details are on the website. An important point of clarity is that we will not be voting on the zoning amendment that evening. That vote will take place on September 8th at the first regular meeting of council in September. So, Thursday night, public hearing, 6:00 PM. September 8th will be the regular council meeting with the vote, and that will take place at 7:30 PM on that evening. Uh, just so that, um, just so that everybody is aware. Did I have a third thing? See, this is what I'm talking about with, um, uh, with Bernie. Oh, uh, yes. Um, so now that we are, uh, coming out of the summer, we've got about a month left until the solstice. And being reminded by Chief Berkeyhizer's comments, um, I want to take a moment to address, um, my council colleagues. We are in a unique moment and a unique position, as is frankly anywhere else in the, in the United States of America. But, uh, between the mass, uh, outpouring, uh, of protests that we've seen and COVID and 100 other things, um, we are part of an organization facing an unprecedented challenge. And we are the legislative body of that organization. Um, and so, uh, a lot falls to us in moving that forward, um, including, uh, the 2021 budget, which, uh, as I'm sure somebody has already said to you, will be one of the most challenging budget as I'm sure somebody has already said to you, will be one of the most challenging budget years in any of our memories, if not, if not the most challenging. And I just want to take this moment to remind you all that what seems like a challenge, what really, really feels like a challenge, is almost always also an opportunity to do something really great and to do some really creative things. So I hope that you will keep that spirit as we move through the last four months of 2020, and hopefully 2021 brings slightly different fortunes to our city and the world entire. That is my report. Council comments?
Mr. President, thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment to really thank the city, particularly the mayor, the chief, and Chris for continuing to listen and as we ask for more and the community asks for more, to really meet the the challenge at hand and continuing to progress towards a common goal. I think one of the things that the mayor didn't get a chance to particularly touch on is the work of the Community Police Working Group. I think that that group, as it becomes more public too, will really start to understand just how much thought and resources and intentionality there has been behind the scenes to really move us forward in the direction that we all want to go towards. And so while I understand that it is not easy, and there are individuals like myself that have more and more questions and want more and more, I am extremely appreciative of the patience and the dedication to the work. So thank you.
Other council comments?
If I may, Mr. President?
Of course.
Just wanted to say thank you to the city staff as well and the mayor for the DEI component that you guys are adding to the to the to city staff in that initiative. I think it's very important as we move forward as a city, as an organization, and I think we could set the example for other organizations in our city and county for that fact, to really start looking at all issues, all organizational structures through a DEI lens. And when we think about diversity, we also have to think about equity and inclusion along with it, not just one of those pieces by themselves. So I just want to thank you for being forward-thinking and taking the lead on that. So thanks.
Hey, guys, I'm going to pay forward that compliment to a lot of other employees in city government. Just want to thank you for taking a few moments to give them kudos. Actually, it does mean a lot. It's been, whoo, it's been a heck of a hard several months, and that's a kiss for a lot of CPAD employees and a lot of the employees in the other departments, too. So so it it does not go unnoticed that thanks. So thank you for for that toughness. It means a lot.
Welcome to Lancaster, Chris.
Hey, thank you.
If there are no other council comments, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, all. Have a good evening.
Bye.